All right, let's get this going. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 4:34 PM. Purpose of approving approval of accounts payable invoices received to date for September. Approval of distribution of insurance reimbursement funds to Sillicotta Parks and Rec. And then any other business needs coming forward counsel and to take action as necessary. All members of the council are present. Chief Carden, would you open us up with a word of prayer, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for our day. We ask you for your grace, your glory, and your love. That you shine down on us, Lord, that your will be done. For I pray that you be glorified during this meeting. We love you and we praise you.
Amen. Pledge my standing for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated today. Do I have a motion to adopt this agenda?
I move.
Motion made by Councilman Darby.
Second.
Second by Councilman Roberts. All those in favor to adopt against agenda? That's five yeas. Item number six, action necessary to approve accounts payable invoices in the amount of eighty-five thousand, two-hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents received to date for September 2014.
Motion?
Motion is made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Second by Councilman Darby. All those in favor? That is five yeas. Item number seven, action necessary to approve distribution of insurance reimbursement in the amount of eleven thousand, two-hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents to Sillicotta Parks and Rec. For theft of property claim from July eighteenth, 2014. I know all these items are new, guys, so if there's any discussion.
I move.
Motion made by Councilman Roberts.
Second.
Second by Councilman Darby. All those in favor? That's five yeas. Item number eight, action necessary to approve payment of FRA grant funds in the amount of one million, five-hundred seven thousand, eight-hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents to GWI for railroad project construction. I would like to kind of go.
I was going to ask the status of the, of the project.
They finished it, that's what that is. The project will remain until we get finished with, can you do this now? Until they get finished with the audit that goes along with it. They have allocated some additional funds from the railroad side to pay for our audit. So the project is essentially finished. The construction part is finished. They only invoiced us one payment for the entire amount of the grant, and that's what that is.
So this was the improvements that they did to the railroads along the city?
And the siding out on, on two lane.
Okay, and I thought they were coming back. Because the, um, two of the railroads that I had questioned about was the one going to Drew Court and the one going to Indian Valley. And I was thinking they were coming back to do the last two.
I was told they were finished. Now, I don't know how many improvements they've made to, to the crossings. I thought they were finished with that part of it, the ones that they had on schedule. They just kind of upped their schedule on that from what I know.
Okay. Do you have some contact information for those folks? Maybe you can get to Councilman Darby to see.
I'd be glad to. I'll ask a question.
That will change. All right. So do I have a motion to approve this payment?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Second by Councilman Roberts. All those in favor? That is five yeas. Item number nine, action necessary to approve payment of FRA grant funds in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one-hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents to East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission for FRA GWI Railroad Project Administrative Services. And that just goes right along with that.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Second by Councilman Roberts. All those in favor? That is five yeas. Item number ten, action necessary to authorize payments totaling three-hundred seventy-nine thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents for payrolls for September 2014. I have a motion. Motion made by Councilman Roberts.
Second.
Second by Councilman Darby. All those in favor? That is five yeas. Guys, do we have anything else we need to discuss? Trish, Mayor, anybody have anything else we need to discuss at this, this meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
Councilman Roberts makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Councilman Carden. All those in favor? That is five yeas. Time of adjournment is 4:39 PM. We will recess and for just a few minutes, well, I don't guess we can start upstairs till five, can we?
No, but notice was immediately.
Was it? Okay, all right. So we'll, uh, we'll recess just for a few minutes and go upstairs for our regular work session.
Uh, one, the trash is forwarded more. Or the, um, three rooms we added a tire station to do with more, you know?
Yeah.
Two rooms of VCT tile, one room of, you know, one room of VCT, two rooms of carpet. The base and all, twelve hundred and seventy dollars. Next would be MJ group construction. This would be to cut a hole in the wall from the new bathroom that we installed. One of the existing showers, close up the opening from the existing bathroom to this shower to create a female restroom. Twenty-four hundred dollars. How much? Twenty-four hundred dollars.
Is that the museum?
That was fire station number one.
Twenty-four hundred?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Fire station number one again. Most of these are one, the others are fire station.
Yes.
All, all, all three of them need to go. This will be the heating and air for the three rooms that we added. Forty-one seventy-five, two thousand, that would be affordable heating and air. And the final would be CD hall wide for all of the access control wiring that we've put in place already. This is for the installation, which actually the, the electronics that operate it and the programming and the wiring of all the doors, hardware that we've been installing. And that's twelve thousand, five twenty-three fifty-eight. The Cali Prime, the Cali D.
What a.
Twelve thousand, five twenty-three fifty-eight.
One more time, I'm sorry.
Twelve thousand, five twenty-three fifty-eight?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the fan's going in there, so I can't hear you. Okay, turn it off.
We're ahead of our projections.
No, I just, I just.
We're ahead of our projections on the internet. You know why? Because we've got the fan on.
That's right, not, not the air conditioner. All right, Mike, is that it?
That's all. Mike, and I know, and I've just, while I'm thinking about it, have we done anything else on getting an architect to look at the museum, those bathrooms and all that stuff that we looked at?
No, I requested, I think, give us four thousand dollars if you wanted to look at it, to get an architect to grow it up.
Is that what, is that the price we got?
Yeah. And I've not heard back.
All right.
It's really hard to get pricing without a drawing for them to price. We're gonna have to start at some point.
All right. What about the roof? Did we, did we, we do anything on the skylight, did it?
I gave the informational material, the, about two meetings ago.
Is that so much?
Yeah, about six thousand dollars. It's not a complete re-roof, it's just a re-roofed skylight area. Around the, um, elevator, penthouse area.
Sure. They just blew it after that?
Um, we just, I just want to say, and you and I said we was gonna get together, stay on top of that, so we need to. So did he give us a price of four thousand dollars on the bathrooms to look at and draw it in?
Four thousand dollars for the architect would be to make the drawing. That would be ADA code compliant and structural, because we're gonna have to widen some doors, get structural engineer involved. And then from there, you would take that and release the price and from contract deal.
All right.
Well, maybe I could, I could get the budget signed, like we started on some of that. Because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to fix some stuff down there.
All right, we got any questions for Mike while he's here concerning any of this stuff? If not, Trish, will you get this on me together for tomorrow, please, man? Yes, we don't mind. All right, finish that. Okay, I knew you did. I'll be over here tomorrow, all right? All right, Mike, thanks, boys, appreciate it. Okay, uh, we've got some representatives here. Billy called me last week, I guess, yeah, last week, and said that the museum wanted to come speak, or some representatives from the museum wanted to come speak to us about their event they're gonna have in November, so. Y'all would.
Mm-hmm. Um, October, October eleventh.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, my birthday's on October eleventh.
October eleventh, okay.
Um, speaking of the bathrooms, and I just want to say one thing, you know, I have applied for a preservation grant from the Alabama Historical Commission. And the max is ten thousand. So if we give that, I have in the grant that it would be, um, given back to y'all. So let's just keep our fingers crossed.
That's right. That'll be paid out quarterly, Mike.
Yes, that'll be quarterly, that's only bad thing about the reservation.
There's nothing bad, though.
Well, no. We're also here, I thank you for this spot. As you all know, um, we planned barbecue cook-off. And we've got, and a lot of people in the city excited about it. We've been on King Chab and Carol. Wednesday, we've got a spot on forty-seven, and then right after that, we're gonna be FDB. And we've been putting fires all over, and it's looking really good. We're having quite a few arts and crafts, this is an arts and crafts, fine arts and crafts, no monster, you know? This is gonna be heavenly items. And then the barbecue cook-off together, and then March, again, we have, we are gonna have the day for chili cook-off. And, you know, we're finding different fundraisers to, you know, keep us going. We have, um, some expenses going on with this, we're gonna have some of the, um, barbecue people coming in Friday evening to set up and then start cooking. So we're gonna have the pork potties, we'll need, um, expenses for advertising, for signings, this and that. And we've come to you this evening to ask you a little bit of support of fifteen hundred dollars to help us out with this. This is a, just a fundraiser for the museum, this is a community, uh, event. We had a big turnout for the chili cook-off. And, um, we're in hopes that this will be as big as that or bigger. Annual means that we plan to have another one next October. We've checked the involved schedules, there's no games playing on that day. We have a rain date of October eighteenth. And, you know, this is just something that, um, we feel the community needs more, more activity, too. And it's something to look forward to every year. Got a lot of restaurants coming in, and there'll be a lot of backyard, um, barbecuers. And there'll be plaques for the winners, we're gonna have people's toys. We have, um, an art contest planned for the, the children, all pig related, by the way. And there'll be a little prize for, for them. We've got a lot of decorations planned, I've got this great big, excuse me, refrigerator, not refrigerator, but a big washing with dryer boxes. And we're gonna do the three little pigs' houses for the kids, and we're gonna have pin the tail on the pig, and, you know, just different, different things to attract the children to. There'll be other vendors there. We're gonna have popcorn, um, shaved ice, peanuts, different things. So then, oh, and we'll be having soft drinks tomorrow. So it's just something that we're asking your support on, just thank you now, and anything you can do for us, we truly appreciate.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
The eleven? A week from just coming, um, yeah, October eleventh. It's gonna be from nine to three. Nine AM to three. And the hospital has even been generous to do a continental breakfast for us again, like they did for the chili cook-off for the, um, participants. So that's real nice to, to the community. We're also wanna get a, um, big tent like we have for the, um, our partners. They make a huge tent, so there's expense on it.
Are y'all gonna have, are y'all gonna have folks in town Friday night at the tent? Because, I mean, I would imagine that some of these folks will have to get there.
They'll be cooking.
Yeah, they'll be cooking, yes.
That's where I'm going with that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll oversee that until they get all settled.
They'll be there all night.
Yeah.
Wouldn't there some discussion, too, about closing off?
Yes, just for that, I think the time, um, it would be Eighth Street between Norton and Broadway.
Eighth Street, yeah. Did we ever get anywhere on that?
We haven't heard anything about that, so. That would be true.
I will call Chris.
Don't you have to call him?
Is it football that Friday night?
No. Oh, oh, yeah.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a football game.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm talking about Saturday.
Oh, for Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, we would close it off Friday. Now, that'd be a disaster.
Just the parking, our parking lot will be closed, yeah, but not the.
Mayor, will you just, will you just call him?
I will.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great.
That's Saturday, October the eleventh.
Um, as early as possible. Um, well, the, um, yeah, because the, the hospital will come in the driveway, so, um, eight, seven thirty-eight. I don't, you know, whatever, whatever the chief decides.
I think, I think seven. I think that's what I would ask for.
Then I'd ask you for that.
Okay.
Seven, eight.
To four P, I think four P.
That's what, we'll be there by six thirty or seven, too, so.
Okay. All right, guys, what do you think?
Thank you, thank you.
What do you think, guys?
We were talking about the Eighth Street between the museum parking lot and the rink.
That's right. From seven, seven to four.
Seven to four Saturday.
Saturday.
Good for them.
Y'all wanna put this expenditure on the, I mean, what do y'all, what do y'all think? I mean, give us some feedback, y'all.
You know how we want something for a dream, and it's going to be a dream.
Yes, has a management lead. As it grows, something big.
Yeah. Do y'all like the number? You mean it's fifteen? Do they everybody? Okay. Trish, if you'll just put, if you'll just, well, if you'll just put this on the agenda for us tomorrow? You know, she knows what I'm talking about. Okay.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, see, she's gonna do the agenda tomorrow.
Um, I'll be kind of an answer, yeah. We wanna keep this all.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you so much, please have a good evening.
Okay, we have.
Thank you.
We've got Barry Vaughn here. I know this did not get put on the, uh, on the agenda. Either I was having email problems or the city was having email problems, but Ken sent me a text message this morning, said that it wasn't on here, and it was in my outbox, so it never got sent. So with that being said, Barry, take it away.
Okay, all right. I just, do I need to go down there or stand?
No, you're, you're fine right there. Yeah, go ahead, cheer him on.
I'm fine, I'll just stand up, I'm gonna get you to do them now. Well, uh, folks, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk to you guys about a subject that I've been associated with for almost as long as I've been practicing law. I was appointed back in nineteen seventy-eight, presiding municipal judge, and, uh, been here ever since. I can't count the numbered administrations I've been through, but as I said in my letter, which I guess all of y'all, all of y'all talked about in the letter, you know, I consider it a public service to serve the city and to serve the population and to serve, you know, the mayor and council in this position. It's gone through a lot of changes in that thirty-some odd years that I've been doing this. And, you know, one of those changes is, is coming up again. And that's, that's what I'm here about. First thing I wanna talk about is the fact that the municipal court is not a revenue court. Thanks to you guys, I just got back from a seminar down in, um, Orange Beach.
Vacation. That's just where they have them.
That's where they had them, and it was, listen, there was a hundred and sixty-seven people at that seminar, the largest thing they've ever had, it's the best seminar they've ever had, it takes over three days. And not only do you interact with the speakers, the folks that come down to tell us what's going on in our business, but you interact with prosecutors, defense counsel, uh, city attorneys and other judges about what they're doing in their areas, and I've got a stack of material a mile high. Trish has always said, I give her more material when I get back than she wants to read, and I haven't had a chance to get all that together yet, but there are some, there are some good information, excellent information that we can learn from, and we can improve our system from just by going to that, that seminar. And, you know, it's just a good exchange of, of information. But the city court is, is not a revenue court. If you look at the statute that created this, we're here to enforce the laws, promote public safety, you know, and promote responsibility in the judiciary for the citizens of Sillicotta. As one speaker said, and I've got a handout, Ken, where's that handout? Five things that, um, not all of you. Got some more? And I, you know, I've, I've known this, but I've been doing this so long that I don't remember it all. The, the local municipal court is the first instance for the foundation enforcement of criminal law. And I'll let y'all just pass that around. And, uh, we've got one more. And, you know, you, you think about it, what court do most of the citizens in any city, town, or country have, have a duty? It's the municipal court, traffic court, misdemeanor court. A lot of people hopefully don't have to go to circuit court or district court, but most everybody or somebody in your family has been to municipal court somewhere, you know? I've seen several of you guys in there. I'm just, I'm just kidding. As visitors, as visitors. Y'all have been visiting, and that's great, it's fun to see it. But the primary responsibilities of the municipal court are maintenance of the peace, safety, streets and highways, and respect for the law as part of our citizen treatment. This is why at these seminars, and of course, I don't know if they're just feeding us a line or not, but they say we're, we are the most important court, because we're like the infantry on the front line. Now, we're not sitting up in the Arby Towers waiting on the Pelican, Pelican brief and everything to come in. We're out there where we dealing with thousands of cases. And as you go up the ladder, the caseload gets less. So we're right on the front line. Of course, our cases are small, we're not dealing with the big murders and things like that, but we're just as important to the folks that come up, because they get an, an idea of what justice is like, what the judiciary is like, and what the city is like. Because I'm a reflection of you guys. If I have a good court, then you, you're honored by that. So that's my goal here, is to do that. And, um, there are areas of concern, if you flip to the second page, you know? And I'm not gonna go and deal on, dwell on this very much, because you guys have read the headlines in the last few months. You know about the concerns of the court. Number one, court records. You've got to have good court records. The imposition and revocation of probation, watch out. That's been the cause of litigation in neighboring counties, and we're lucky that we have not been, been involved in that. Counsel, incarceration, and pre-trial diversion, you know, that's the, that's having representation, having an opportunity for representation in the pre-trial diversion program, which kind of keeps people out of jail if they do certain things. And private probation services, that's another issue, of course, y'all have made a decision on, and I think that's a, that's the right decision to make. And then judicial engagement. Let's talk about judicial engagement for just a minute. If you look at, and I think you've all, probably all got a copy of the advisory opinion from the Judicial Inquiry Commission, you all seen that? Well, I read the, uh, case as it came out, uh, over in Shelby County, and then you read this, and the case is about that thing, you know, and this is just a summation of it. But if you look at the responsibility now placed upon me as the municipal court judge, I'm responsible for everything that goes on in that courtroom. And while we had the judicial JSC, I'm responsible for everything they did. I'm responsible for everything the clerks do. I'm responsible for the, I'm responsible for everything that goes on in that courtroom, period. The fact that I'm a part-time judge doesn't matter. I have to devote sufficient time to the running of the court to make sure it runs properly and efficiently and is, and is just for these people. It's not just, oh, let's just do it and go on, you know, it's, it's done. And I've got to have competent, responsible people there, so I will stay out of trouble. Because if I can't get competent, responsible people, then I'm not gonna be the judge anymore. I don't need the exposure, you know? We need people that know what they're doing to be in court. And I know that the revenues have, uh, cycled off for a time, and you can look at my, uh, letter, you've got some examples there of what's happened to the, to the revenue, and I'm gonna go into that right now. But the cause of that is the court, it's my responsibility to look at that. I've never had to look at that. This time yet, last year, I didn't look at that, you know? Now I look at that. You know, I have to look at everything. I get the, I get the pay sheets, uh, so what the court makes, and there's, what is it, sixty? I get the, uh, I get the pay sheets, uh, so what the court makes, and there's, what is it, sixty-seven, sixty-some-odd little piles we put money into every month? It's ridiculous. I got a pot chart here that, uh, try to find it, I'll pass it around. Try to kind of open your eyes as to, uh, take a test of this. Showed the mayor this the other day, and he's like, you gotta be kidding me. I won't bother you with old one, I just give you new. This is the areas where the money is divided up that I am, I am now responsible for. Sixty-seven plus divisions of the money that is generated by the municipal court. Now, the fallacy of this is that we are not a revenue court. The law says it. They say it over and over at the seminar, we're not a revenue court. But somebody's interested in revenue from this court, and it's the folks that, down in Montgomery, that pass this, because very little of this stays with the city of Chicago. Most of it goes to funds you've never heard of. We have the circuit court, you know, I think it goes to all kind of stuff that you don't know where it goes, and that's by law. That's expanded tremendously in the past thirty-some-odd years since I've been doing it. We didn't have to do all of that to start with. It's expanded, and it keeps expanding. So, we've gotta have competent people to keep up with the money. But because of the shortfall in the fair trial tax, which pays for the public defenders in the court to, uh, represent folks with serious, serious, uh, uh, cases like DUI and drug cases, where they could possibly be convicted of a felony or spend a lot of time in jail mandatory. Uh, you've got the interlock system now, you all, you all even know what the interlock system is. That's come up, come of age, and we've got to start enforcing that, so we get all this stuff put on us that we've got to handle, and we're gonna handle it. That's part of what we do. But because the fair trial tax only generates about two thousand dollars a month, and we've got three thousand dollars in expenses, then, uh, my plan is starting next month that we are going to put the three public defenders on a rotation basis and have one rotate off every third month, so it only costs the city what the fair trial tax is currently bringing in or close to. It may be a little more one month, a little more the next month, a little less, whatever, but it's not taking a thousand dollars out of the general fund and having to supplement that. And I've talked to the, uh, the public defender, they understand, you know, they understand. We're gonna have to make sure, some of them gotta work a little harder than they've been working, but right now, our numbers are down. And you can see from the, from the chart that I've given you, that the numbers are slightly down. I think that's probably, uh, um, like I say, cyclical, I don't know, but from, uh, you know, you started out in two thousand and ten with a total of forty-seven, almost forty-eight hundred cases, and it went up to twelve to fifty-five, almost fifty-six hundred. Last year, down to forty-two, and this year, we're at two thousand, and we're not through this year. But if you project that on out, you know, for the next three months, October, November, December, you know, you're not gonna hit three. You know, we may get twenty-five, twenty-six, something like that. So, that's, that's a, that's an all-time low for us. And of course, what we, what we do is we take charge of the traffic tickets, the ETC, UTCs, that are ridden by the ship, or the, the police department, the misdemeanors that come in, and the ECs. Do you mind what EC is? On that chart, you see, it's environmental. We do, we do the environmental thing. That's dog ordinances and, you know, threat, and, and pulling trash out, things like that. That's what that means, but you can see there's a definite shortfall as of this year. So, until that cycle changes, I would propose that we do the rotation that's set out in here, which should save the general fund a thousand dollars a year. Now, you know, the big issue.
What, you mean a month? Oh, I thought you said a thousand a year.
A thousand a month, twelve thousand a year.
Kind of question on that.
Sure.
At what point might that become a problem because of carryover cases? Like, say, you're representing someone, but you're off next month, and this case carries over for that.
We've, we've addressed that already.
I figured you have, but I won't.
The attorney that has the case knows what month they're going to be off. And so, if I start to put their case on the trial after that month, they just say, gosh, that's my month to rotate off, put it for the next one.
Just making sure that this is addressed, because that can, that can come up in the question of the quality of counsel.
Right. And we got, we got three good lawyers now that, uh, that do a good job with that, and, uh, one of the, one of the big issues, you know, they talked about the seminar that's been on the headlines, is the indigent situation. What do you do with people that are indigent below the poverty level? I mean, I got charts out at the zoo they gave us, I mean, there's more information you wanna know about, but people that are below poverty level, what do you do with them? They can't pay their fines. What, what, what do you do with people that can't pay their fines, you know? You, uh, you look back on the second page, and we took this right off the JCS webpage as of September the second, and there are two thousand three hundred and ten probationers as of July, I mean, September the second, two thousand fourteen. You know how many of those are paying? Little over four hundred. Everybody's doing something else. That's one of the reasons the revenue is low, because people, it's economic times, hard times, whatever, they don't have jobs, they don't have money, they're more interested in feeding their kids and paying their rent than they are paying fines and costs. And if they qualify, we have to appoint them a lawyer. The law says we cannot incarcerate them if they do not have the ability to pay. And that's my job to determine whether or not they have the, the ability. We have to go through a little hearing on every one of them, find out if they've got the ability to pay. They have to fill out a form. Then we've gotta determine, make that determination. Then we've gotta come back every three to six months to review to see if the situation's changed. The other choice is, if we don't do that, I, I stroke the pen and write off the fees and costs. Nobody gets anything. So, it, it's, it's a vicious circle, is what it is.
And you carry on, if they can't pay, you just keep?
We keep carrying it over usually for a year, and then if they haven't been in any change, and they've got a lawyer now that's advising them and, and, as an officer of the court, reporting back as to what their condition is. And if it's been a year and they haven't been any change, if there's gonna be any change, they're gonna write off.
And a lot of the folks that you see in court are there primarily because of the difficulty to pay a fine, or they would've just paid it and skipped your court.
And that's, that's one of the decisions, and I, let me say this on the record, I don't have any problem with JCS. As far as I'm concerned, they did an adequate job. They did what they were supposed to do. Was they perfect? No, I'm not perfect, but they did an, an adequate job of what they were doing. The problem with them was people that couldn't afford to pay, the fines couldn't afford to pay probation fees. You know, they were charging twenty dollars a month for probation fees. Well, what we're proposing, and we've got, I think you all already gotten the, uh, AG's opinion of the case law, or the statute, that, uh, allows me to invoke a monitoring fee so that we can monitor anybody that's on probation. I went ahead and put that in effect. AG said I could, and I want you guys to bless it. All right? So, we can put that ten-dollar monitor in. What that does, the clerks have to monitor the people on probation, all two thousand of them. We've got to know where they are, what they're doing, they've gotta report in, we've got to check whether or not they've got another criminal case anywhere else. We've got to monitor them, and that's what that fee goes for. And if you just take the four hundred or so people that are on active probation, if they pay the ten dollars rather than the forty dollars, you know, that'll be almost fifty thousand dollars in the general. You know, here again, I gotta say it again for the record, we are not a money-making court. We're here to spend justice. But I know you guys are responsible for the money, where it goes, how it's spent, to make it frugal and fair and honest, and, and that's, that's what I want, that's what I wanna approach you with this. But, uh, with JCS going out at the end of next month, that, uh, that's gonna, it's already put a burden on us, because we're having, we're not assigning them any more cases. It doesn't make sense to assign them a case and then have to print back the address. This is their request. I mean, if we met and said, if we're not gonna be there, you wanna sign a case? I said, it doesn't make any sense to assign them cases. What are you gonna do with them? They said, oh, we appreciate it. Yes, that's, it's amicable, but, but what they've been doing with three employees, we're gonna have to start doing with four employees, you know, on top of what we're already doing. Now, I've spoken with the chief, and with the staff, and they're willing to take on that responsibility. Because, look at it this way, John. If you've got somebody that knows what they're doing, and you trust them, because they've been there a long time, I'm gonna trust them to take on a little more responsibility, as opposed to somebody new that comes in, and we've gotta go through the civil service procedures, we've gotta go, we've gotta train them, we've gotta pay them, and, you know, to hire two people, Rick, it's gonna cost a whole lot more than what we're asking for here, which is twenty-seven thousand dollars. So, um, it's important to me that the people that serve the public, as magistrates in this court system, know exactly what they do. They're well-trained, they know what they're doing. Um, I can't say enough, and I'm not gonna build his head up by letting him go on all the stuff I wrote about Ken in the letter, but it's true. There's a lot of court, uh, judges that I spoke to in this, uh, seminar and in others before that don't have magistrates, chief magistrates, that understand the law, like someone that's had as many years as Ken's had in the law, to know what is public or cause, what is not, understands procedure, come up with a procedure, been involved in it. He is invaluable. But he's gonna have to get his hands dirty. He can't, he can't sit in his office and shout out, oh, what nothing's doing that now. But it's gonna take everybody in that office to handle the influx of what's going to happen when all these probationers start coming in. We've gotta find out where everyone of them are and keep up with them, and that doesn't count when the legislature decides to put some other act all over. Um, just a side note, I don't have all of them, we're gonna have a couple of them. There's, there's a couple of new acts that, that, there's a, there's a new act, it's a bestality. And they had an old, but this one's a huge act. That's, here again, it's bestality, that's bad things you do without. And, uh, it's coming up, it's effective as of July, and it's gonna happen this court. So, we don't have any charts, we, we try to take it and run it, you know? And there's other cases, I'm not gonna bore you with all of that, but it's, it's getting more and more and more and more. And in my humble opinion, and I'm, I'm not criticizing anybody, but I think the, uh, magistrates are, you know, chief, they're underpaid for what they do. They have tremendous liability. You have tremendous liability. I have tremendous liability based on what they do and what they don't do. Because the Judicial Inquiry Commission, the Ethics Commission, and the judge, and everybody else says I'm responsible for it. So, if I'm gonna be responsible for it, it's first of all gonna be running, what, right? And I'm gonna try to get fair compensation for the people for what they do, and I'm gonna report to you everything that I know that needs to be done to improve the system. And thank goodness, we've got a way to pay for it. I wouldn't be here if we couldn't pay for what I'm asking for. Now, you know, we've got several funds that, uh, are, are out there. You got, uh, you've got the Corrections Fund.
Okay.
Now, the Corrections Fund can only be used for certain things, having to do with the municipal court complex, uh, juveniles, uh, and the jail. That's it. Ain't used for anything else for an expansion. Uh, right now, there's, uh, nine thousand dollars in that fund. Okay? Now, according to the records from the municipal court, uh, since June of two thousand and twelve, and all these judicial acts came into effect that summer, uh, the Corrections Fund, we've paid into the city a little over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Little over two years. That ain't too bad, you know? I don't know where that money went, it's down to nine now, I don't know what happened to it, but we've paid it in there, and it's gone somewhere for something.
Is it a supplement?
Yeah.
Is it a supplement?
I wonder. Okay. Um.
What is judicial instruction? I don't know what time period you said, what number.
It's June, June twelfth, come out, so. Uh, and then you've got the Judicial Administrative Fund. Now, that fund is restricted, it came about in that same summer of twelve, and it can only be spent by me and the chief, what? Nobody else can touch it. And it, we, we paid into that a little over seventy thousand dollars during that same period. It's got about thirty-two or so thousand dollars in it now. I don't know what happened to all that money either, but the point is, not what happened to the money, the point is, there is money being generated by all of these funds that the legislature's placed on us that we can pay for what we're asking for today without giving into any other fund and having it overrun in the monitoring fee. Because if you have forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars in it, and you're looking for twenty-seven out of it, there's gonna be a little overage there, you know? So, we can pay for things that need to be paid for out of that, uh, out of those funds. So, that's, that's it, folks, unless you've got a question, uh, I'd be glad to answer anything you wanna fire.
Have you got those dates that Barry was talking about, so we can go back and look and see where all that money is?
Well, I can tell you what happened to the Corrections Fund, I just did.
Yeah.
And the seventy thousand dollars was used primarily for salaries. Is that not right, Ken?
I, I don't know the amount, but she was paid for that fund.
Well, just real quick.
I'll be glad, well, I think anytime that money is approved in the budget, I'll, or maybe, maybe the judge is not getting that information, I'll be glad to see it.
I'm, I'm not asking where it's gone, I'm just saying, what, what we're generating.
We need to know, I guess, where.
I, I guess the.
Y'all's responsibility for where some of that money goes.
I guess the, the main, the main question I have, the, the twenty-seven thousand that you're asking for is all for salaries, uh, and three thousand.
Three thousand all the time.
Twenty-four thousand for salaries.
Right.
Uh, I mean, it, it's clear that the court can generate that, that funding.
Right.
I don't think we do, but with the Civil Service Board, they don't have anything to do with pay scales. Okay, that's what I thought.
We, we've already talked to our attorney, Mr. Runz, and it has nothing to do with, you ought to do this if you want to.
Right.
Has nothing to do with civil service.
Exactly.
It has to do with workload.
Right.
And to compare what these, uh, my staff here is making, somewhere like Bell City, their, their, uh, trained magistrate makes about thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars a year for statistics. So, I mean, we're, we're underpaid, and I wanna keep the staff that this guy is there training. But they know a heck of a lot more in the past three and a half years than they knew before. I mean, they understand the process, and that's because I wanna keep them. You know, I wanna keep them in the fray and keep them incentivized so that they don't say, I'm not gonna do this, and out the door they go. Then we gotta get somebody else in here to train and train. In the meantime, if somebody makes a mistake or an error, you read those.
We're liable, we're liable.
Well, yeah, it, it goes right up the channel.
That's right.
And so, I'm here for everybody's protection and, you know, to get these folks compensated. And I'm, I'm not telling you this is the last time I'll come back, but I'll come back whenever I need to. But I'll have a solution. It won't be here begging, saying, what do we do, we don't know what to do. We'll come up with a solution, a recommendation, let you guys consider it, then we'll work. And that's what we've got today.
Let me, let me ask, make sure I've got it wrong with this. Uh, those probationers, I mean, I think it's tough that only four hundred of those are actually paid on a regular basis, but they are, and a part of their, their pay that's, uh, paying has been forty dollars a month to come to JCS now. Now, what you get to, to do now, assuming that those numbers stay about the same or get better, um, ten dollars of that you could put into another type of fund that would be used to generate funds directly. The other thirty dollars, they would be paying along with whatever portion of the fine that they were paying off, goes back. The other thirty dollars, they will be paying along with whatever portion of the fine that they were paying off, goes back into that circle and gets cut up. And it's also supplying the corrections fund.
And the judicial administrative fund, the fair trial tax, all of those funds are paid. They've got a bond fee.
So you wouldn't get the extra thirty bucks directly, it would be cut up the way that, but.
But, you know, when we, when we first, uh, let people know that they can pay the clerk's office directly, we had people paying that night. You're gonna pay the clerk's office? Oh, yeah. Okay. Ten dollars, no problem. I mean, they hadn't had a first person complain about paying the ten dollar monitor fee because they're so glad they did the pay. And the payments are much less, the payments are spread out over two years, so they can pay it off anytime they want to. But the, the probation term only lasts two years.
And if they don't get it by then, you don't get it.
If you don't get it, you don't get it. It's, uh, what we have to do at that point in time is turn it over to see the attorney who plays. But I can't, I'm good. If we don't play it in two years, it's gone.
Ken. Your, your people can do that, you're, you're comfortable, you, you think that your people, because what I don't wanna happen, if, if we do decide to do this. Maybe next year, you say, look, I gotta have another employee.
We'll do it, okay. I've got their commitment.
Okay.
Well, how are you?
Fine, I'm good. No, you just walk in, you're in, but I know you know what the subject is about.
I know the subject matter, I don't know what has already been said. Uh, but what I did hear Barry say, I agree with him a hundred percent. I've talked to Ken extensively, assured me that it's on the scale, that it's on the. Assuming that the same money comes in, the greater portion of it will be available to the city. Since we just got the J C S out of the loop, assuming that the, the letter has been delivered to J C S.
The letter has been sent.
Um, then, you know, in theory, that I do.
Hey, if it doesn't work, I'll be, uh, back up here with a solution. And a resolution to that fund. Because monkeys on my back. And I take that very seriously.
You're letting him ride, Barry.
And he's right, he's there, but they, the springboard put him there, and I can't get rid of him. So I'm gonna take it seriously, and, uh, if I need help, I'm gonna ask for it, but I'm gonna help a season, and so I'm gonna do my job. I don't know what to do, it's gonna be dealt with a resolution.
Well, you know, it's, it's, as y'all, as y'all know, you know, we're, we're grabbing at the, the, the budget engines have, have been, have been revving and are at full throttle.
I understand.
And so, uh, uh, obviously it's not gonna happen by October first, since, as we inspect it.
Right.
Uh, Ken, I, I'm certain you've got this worked into your, into, into your, your budget for, for this year. Okay. It was in your request, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me say this, uh, I know you may have to consider, you know, everything about the October first date for salary increases, that and that. Let's go ahead and all approve on Wednesday the rotation.
Okay.
Okay, so we can get that in effect, but that will save, that will save at least a thousand dollars next month that Trish doesn't have to get from wherever she gets the money from, the supplement.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't wanna do that, we wanna put that in effect.
And the monitoring fee.
And the monitoring fee, yes. And the monitoring fee.
And monitoring fee is ten dollars.
That's ten dollars. Ten dollars, now, it's ten dollars per month per defendant, not per case.
Case. That's a big difference.
Per defendant. We got, one, we have defendants with ten and twelve cases.
Or more.
They pay one monitor fee for all of those cases.
Do we have something showing how that's set up and how it's structured?
All I have is the A G opinion, it says I can do it, and we've got the money, we've collected it, and it's just sitting, we don't know what to put, that's why I want you all to tell us where to put it.
You know, they're like, find to put it in.
So they don't have anything kind of like you did with the deferred sentencing fee? Don't have anything like that in place?
Karen, none of that counts, Karen, it's fine.
What did she take care of?
I can't, I think I heard you say you don't have a hard copy.
No, I said, what did, what did she take care of?
The, the act?
No, no, he's talking about where we put the money.
Oh.
No, I was asking, is there, y'all have something that's set up in deferred sentencing program or the deferred prosecution?
The mon, the monitoring fee from deferred sentencing program, there's a special cap set up for that. I, I did not even think, is this gonna go in that, or are we gonna set up a separate?
No, I'm asking, do you have a, do you have a document similar to that that structures this monitoring system?
That would be built into the probation order on the same.
Are you talking? I'm. Are you talking about like our checkup?
No, sir. I'm talking about something that spells out what you're gonna do with the money and how you're gonna collect it and all that kinda stuff. Some type of document that structures it so that the council can approve whatever you're proposing. So right now, all you're asking them to do is approve your charging of monitoring fee.
The monitoring fee in accordance with the A G opinion in the case of the statute. And that's, that's, we don't know where to put it yet.
Okay, is that?
I think y'all were asking, I think y'all were talking about those forms. I think you're talking about where, what account we put the money, which line item we put it on, is that right?
Yeah.
And you're saying.
Maybe if I see the A G's opinion, I'll have a better answer to my question.
It, it says basically that Barry can approve supervision fees when it's defended based on their. That's what it says, that's the gist of it.
And what Trish is asking is when we collect it downstairs, where does it go?
Where does it go?
And what is it being used for?
It's being used to monitor, it can only be used to monitor those people that are on probation. And if you monitor, that, that can go into salaries because that's, that's what part of their job is, is to monitor.
Trish just needs some reading material left for the council meeting, she loves to read.
Well, I'm fixing to give it to her tomorrow, she don't get it.
No, I'm on this.
She'll need something to read publicly.
Oh, this, this is in, this is in there, we talked about this in the seminar, this is in there.
It's in there.
I just want.
Yeah, it's in there.
So, so this money will go into the general fund, is that?
Ninety percent sure, I'll double check it.
Whoever, y'all, tell us.
That's my mom.
Who approves the expenditure of it? Do we, does the council approve the expenditure?
Yeah.
Approve expenditure, I, I wanna prove it.
Karen copied me, I checked up this morning with the monitoring fee, it is a line item, it has an account number, uh, and it goes into general fund.
We'll keep up with how much goes into it, and then, you know, can spend it, as y'all see it, but.
Except that it has to be for monitoring, which means it goes.
We have to monitor, so if we, if we, if we monitor and the money goes somewhere else, then I don't know if, uh, if it's gonna be done in court to this day. Because if that gets restricted, we cannot use it.
Be spent in some shape, form, or fashion on the people who were.
Monitoring. That's what we're, that's what we're checking within the court's act. But that's why we put it in that box, and that's why it seems to fit good, uh, to cover and then have a little additional.
And you're already collecting it.
Just already collecting.
So Trish, did that, does that get you enough?
I'll, I'll try to get a copy of the A G's.
Okay. So let's put that on the agenda for Wednesday.
Along with public defender.
Those will be two separate items. And so I think that's, and that needs to go ahead and get on, and then as far as the salaries, as far as the twenty-seven thousand, uh, those will be budget compensation, obviously. So, uh, you know. We'll work, we'll work through that there.
Can I have a copy please?
Yeah. Okay, we, we got any more questions, anything else?
For this one, you go. I'm just gonna play, do, if you're gonna do the budget thing, do I need to come back on Wednesday morning for anything at the council meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see why.
Okay. Y'all need me for any more questions or for the budget discussion, all you gotta do is put up the phone, doesn't matter where you're. Okay?
All right.
Anything else?
That's it?
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Dale?
Thank you, see you later.
Thanks, sir.
Trish, you're ready tomorrow. Won't you leave at your email, but I'm just loading you up.
Well, I don't know how much can come through per email.
Oh, I can send.
Try to send more than one.
I will, I will, there's a lot of.
If it, if it blocks, then just send.
But some of it's not, I'm just kidding, some of it's not, it's more or fewer, but I'll send you things that are maybe in effect, that will impact you, the court.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And then they have a detailed discussion of that in there to the left.
Good. Cause I've been interested in this.
See y'all.
Y'all, I appreciate y'all. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
All right. Do we have, do we have anything from the city attorney as far as the proposal from wireless consultants yet? To the reason. Do, do we have any, do we have anything from Winn about that?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We don't have anything from Winn, he, he was off last week, and I think he just got back.
That's right.
Today was his first day.
I just had a discussion of that.
The guy that.
Of that proposal.
Owns that thing, called me one day last week and, and, uh, invited any of y'all that had any questions to call him.
Well, we all got an email.
Yeah.
From him. Uh, that I think you forwarded.
Not from the wireless guy, but.
Yeah.
Did I send you a copy of the?
Daniel.
Daniel Hoes?
Yeah.
Okay. I sent you a copy of his proposal.
That's right.
That's right.
Um, so we'll, we'll just move that over, you know, uh, roll, roll that over. Uh, to the, to the next time, I guess, to give, give Winn opportunity to look at that. Cool?
Cool.
All right. Uh, I got a discussion of budget on here, Mayor, you just wanna kinda give us an update?
Yeah, we are.
Not ready for us yet.
No, we're, we've got, we've got all the requests from the departments and, um, I think just all the, all the contracts. We're pretty much done with the revenue side of it. Uh, we're about thirty-five thousand dollars more revenue than we were last year. But the utility board gave us thirty-four, thirty-two thousand more, I think, this year, so, so most of, most of the additional is coming from the utility board, so.
That place should be thirty-six.
Yeah, yeah, well, it was thirty-six, okay. And we were about thirty-five, so we're about thirty-five more than last year, so all of it came from the utility board. But we're through, we've got that done, and we're ready to start putting everything together now, so we'll be. Probably get back on it Wednesday after the council meeting.
I would believe so, Ken.
All right, good deal. Uh, and, and. Wednesday, we'll need to, uh, to approve a continuation for the fiscal year fourteen budget to just keep operating as we have to until we get there. Knocked out. All right, uh, we are, we do have one, uh, item under old business, if you remember, uh, two weeks ago. We had an application for retail beer and retail table wine for Coastal Holdings Incorporated D V A Coastal Discount Tobacco located on Norton. Uh, we'll need to take action on this. Um, I haven't seen a letter from the police department. Have they, have they given us their blessing? No problem.
What, what building are you?
I think it was Cupboards. So, as long as we've got a letter, Trish, you know, we don't have to produce it, just as long as y'all know. No, it's gonna be a retail, so you're not gonna be able to drink in there. You can take, take it. Um, okay. Guys, real quick, I'll go over, uh. Shannon P. Denny and Jeremy B. Denny have applied for an off-premises retail beer and wine license through the A B C Board for their business Coastal Holdings Incorporated. D V A Coastal Discount Tobacco located one oh seven Norton Avenue to the cargo, three five five oh. The check of police and court files does not reveal any local records for the individual listed on the application. They will prevent, you know, from obtaining this license. So, they've given us kinda their, their blessings, so that'll be on the agenda for tomorrow, guys. Um. Yeah, Wednesday, the agreement for, uh.
One more question on that, I did have, uh, someone ask, you informed us this last time, there's a difference between the on and the off premises. Uh, of what ordinances or whatever regulations those come from. So just to, not questioning its validity, but wanting to see something on those things that hasn't been seen.
Okay.
Does that make sense? They'd like to look at the, 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 the difference between the ordinances.
Between an on premise.
Yeah.
And, and an off premise?
Right.
I think that's easy on you.
That's an A B C.
That, that's.
That's something that the A B C determines, when they have not. Our ordinance has to do with the lounge and restaurant.
Right. Ours only applies to lounges and restaurants, and it says nothing about our off-premises.
We don't.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
But now you can go to the city, to M U code website, call up the city's code of ordinances, and look under off, it, it has a definition for restaurant, it has a definition for lounge, and it has the distances.
Okay, but I guess.
They just.
Are, are you asking what determines off-premise and off-premise?
No, 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 it is how we deal with them, like the distance from church, school, and all those other.
Oh, yeah, well, that ordinance is, is on M U code too, and I, I did have. Yeah, it's our, it's ours, but basically that only applies to on, our ordinance only applies to on-premises.
Right, I, I understand that, uh, that's, that was one of the questions, and the other one, uh, had to do with. There's all sorts of distances away from schools and churches that are being banded about and of what is actually in our ordinance question.
I can, I mean, I can tell you.
Does anybody have, have access to the lounge in here?
The, the ordinance, our, our ordinance says three hundred feet. If, if you have, if you're basically a bar or a lounge, meaning you're not serving food and using utensils to eat that food with. You know, popcorn is, is not, or pretzels is not considered, but basically, if you're a bar or a lounge, you need, you have to be three hundred feet from, uh, you know, church, an educational facility. Or, uh, residential areas, I think is how they, is how they, uh, put you go to both the ordinance. Restaurants are fifty feet away. If you're serving food, you can.
In Montgomery, they do that by percentage of your revenue, percentage of your revenues, over half of it was, uh, was from food, then classified as a restaurant.
I don't think our.
I came up in the neighborhood, I live.
Yeah, I don't think our ordinance, uh, separates it that way, I think it has a definition for what a restaurant is, and, uh, I don't think it has.
And that was, that's basically the question.
Okay, all right. Good deal.
What's the name of this website?
It's just M U code, go to, go to, go to the city's website.
Yeah.
And just click on code of ordinances.
Okay.
And you'll see it's on M U code, it's all separated, it's pretty nice.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Gets me out of my little.
There you go. Uh, it's nice when you just call out numbers and say.
I'd like to find out, that's fast.
That's right. All right, new business, guys, agreement for transit services with East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. Um, I mean, we've been doing that for quite some time, and that's, that's the.
New agreement.
That for the next, for this year, so, uh, I don't think there's really anything discussed there. Uh, and then Tommy Woodley's got a tractor that he wants to declare circles and offer ourselves a little bit. And that is it.
I have some things that I failed to get on the agenda. I have, um, the Department of Transportation, B O T, sent us the railroad crossing signal upgrades, they're gonna make improvements to the, to the railroad crossings in town. And at no cost to us, we just have to maintain them after, so they make all the improvements with federal dollars. It is the crossing for Norton Avenue, and it is the crossing for. Fort Williams.
Now, Fort Williams is easy, that's down toward, uh, this past, about the.
East Fort Williams.
Which, which crossing on both, up here by the school.
They also have one from Bell City, but it's not ours.
So, yeah.
The ones that they have city on school. Um, something else that I wanted to ask y'all about, you asked for a full R D S call for last meeting, and y'all were gonna get in touch with Mr. Yance and some of the folks that he does business with. Have y'all had an opportunity to.
Have y'all had an opportunity to do that?
I've had an opportunity, I've had an opportunity to give to some of those people, but I wanna, I, I'm, I've kinda gotten some mixed reviews, honestly, uh, from, from various businesses, you know, that list that he provided us with? Um, so I have not spoken with Mr. Yance.
Those are his documents that he does business with.
Right, that's, that's what I mean. Um, I, um, I think, I mean, I, I think I'd be ready, uh, in, in two weeks, I don't, I don't, I'm ready for that, I mean, for, for Wednesday.
Okay, I didn't hear from you about Yance. You were the only person who responded to this from his answer.
This is another one that I call in for some...
I just needed to put it on the, that's why you want me to put it on in two weeks?
Yes. I'll be, I'll be ready, for sure. For sure.
No, so there will be an, an item on there about the railroad crossings, and there's a check in the, up there.
Do y'all want, Mr. Yance here? I just made it. And I think, you know, if you got, if you got questions, he's got to answer them. I can tell you what I've been told, and I can tell you what people who use them, in Chilwell'sburg, for example, um, what they've told me, but it's nothing like asking a voice.
Yeah.
We, we see you get email.
Right?
Yeah.
He copied me on that.
Yes, of course.
I'll get that number from you tomorrow, and I'll have to see you for a little bit.
I tell you, my, you know, my knee jerk is still, I mean, my feeling is still that it could be beneficial for us, I just kinda wanna have the facts, you know, since, since I have run into some negatives, there's, there's negatives out there, honestly.
Was it on the sales tax side, or was it on the business taxes?
Sales tax.
I'm not asking you to do sales tax, I won't leave state, I won't do the business taxes, gross. And the majority of people that he collects are people that we're missing. You know, most of our people, the manufacturers, for example, I think those were some of the concerns that, you know, my phone calls about, were for manufacturers. Most of our manufacturers are current, those in police jurisdiction, we don't have any dividends, we don't, we don't exercise police jurisdiction, so they would not be affected on any of them. Unfortunately, Chilwell'sburg, Oak Grove, Calumine, all exercises in police jurisdiction. I don't see a downside.
What is the cancellation clause on that, clause on that? How long, how long must we sign on, how long have we gotta keep it?
I mean, you can cancel it at any point in time. I mean, I don't know that for a fact, I haven't, I haven't really looked at any of that.
I'd like to know that.
I haven't seen.
Before we sign, I'd like to know.
Okay.
How long is signing, so?
All right, well, y'all, y'all got anything else, guys?
Uh, one thing, Joe said something about it this, uh, today, uh, and it's not, no action y'all need to take, but the utility board is going to rent, we've done this before, they're gonna rent a trackhoe, and we're gonna use it to, uh, open some of, some of